That would have required the mitigation wetland site. That being not the case, does IFNW know this or are they aware of this change?
Yeah, yeah, so we've been coordinating with them directly. And so they they were the ones that actually required us to to remove those panels out of the 250 foot setback. So I, as far as I know, I believe they're aware of this change and I believe that they've signed off on on this change at this point.
Okay, yeah, I I see that Mr. Stortz is on on the call. If there's no objection, I I'd ask him to comment on the conversation you had with him. Andrew, are you comfortable doing that?
Oh, absolutely.
Can you describe how you're feeling about this change?
About the the plan as it is now?
Yeah, the the modified plan.
I mean, I feel better about it. With the the first few rows set back a bit.
Okay, because you had you had rather strong comments at the public hearing.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's it, the whole thing obviously is never going to be ideal for me, but this is better than it was.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you. Okay, Matt, I'm sorry, I interrupted you, why don't you keep going?
No, I I I think that that pretty much wrapped up what we changed. You know, in talking with IFNW, that that was their main concern and now that we're out of that zone, I think they're they're happy with the plan.
Good, good.
No, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I I just have a question, it looks like there's a, it says install a silt fence. Does that mean there's a lot of drainage that basically drains from the upper part of the plan down below into the marsh? And that now the silt fence in place will prevent that?
Yeah, so even even on the previous plan, I believe we did have a silt fence there before, so that's just during construction, if there's any sort of sediment during rain or anything that's eroding off the site because it does drain in that direction. That silt fence is there to prevent any eroded or eroded materials from entering that emergent marsh or into that area. So we're really preventing just those materials from leaking the site.
Is it permanent or is it only during?
No, no, that that will get removed at the end of construction.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a it's a fairly common protection during construction to be sure that while the project is not hasn't reached final stability, that there you have a protection so that there's reduced potential for offsite migration. That's 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 a common application in a in a project like this. Okay.
And can I ask what it, when it says indirect wetland impact? What exactly is that?
So that's going to be the cutting of the vegetation in that area. So I believe in in this instance, that indirect impact will be cutting of that vegetation, but the stumps will remain there. So that wetland in indeed, I believe in DEPs, it's still wetland, but we're going to be disturbing it during construction. But after construction, it's still going to be considered a wetland because those stumps and roots are still going to be there maintaining that habitat.
Okay.
Seriously, I mean, once you put in a big solar farm, does anything grow underneath it?
Yeah, well, in in the sites that I've seen, I I have seen vegetation and such growing underneath the panels. Again, that's that's in DEP's eyes, we're we're simply abiding by that.
Nope, we lose you, Matt, you there?
Yeah, I'm still here.
So to the applicants, are you looking for any official action this evening?
I believe we were looking for final approval of the site, maybe with the condition that we get approvals from DEP at this point. Because we are still continuing to to work with them through this process.
And how long does it take for before DEP will have their approvals?
It's it's hard to say, I would say maybe a couple of weeks or so. It, I guess it kind of depends on how DEP reviews it, how how fast they can get through that process. And if they have any more comments that we'll have to address, that could carry on, but I I personally don't have a timeline for that.
I think traditionally, we're the last in line that usually DEP will give their approval. And then if there's some comments they have, then we can look at them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think I agree.
Yeah, I think this, the the, you were very responsive to the points raised at the public hearing. And the 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 wetlands mitigation thing, I had suggested might be a bigger barrier than would could be resolved in short period of time, but you're 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 taking that off the table by moving the the panels over, so that that doesn't require it. If I I ask, David Galbraith had prepared a review memo for the we, the product, I mean, we should have had three weeks ago. And I don't know, Dave, do you have any overall comments to to make on where we're at in the process?
Well, where we were at, at last time we actually heard the case, the application was tabled until some information was provided to the board. And we talked about the IFNW permitting and the turtle habitat. And so a condition of approval, if the board went that way, could be added that no permits would be issued until IFNW approved plans are received by the town. And the the applicants had also said they talked to property owners, which they looked like they've done. And the other thing is we're going to get letters from real estate agents verifying the property values would not decline due to the proposed solar.
Right, I recall that. Yeah, I think, go ahead.
So from my point of view, I'm, I think they've done a very good job and prepared pending the the last of the DEP and whatever other agency has to approve it to see this project go forward. So I think the balls and the applicants want to have some intense meetings with the different people involved to get that resolved.
I I think what we're saying, if I, maybe we can have a sense of the board is that because because the 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 DEP permit is going to be so fundamental and it's been, they've been, they've been caring for it very carefully along the lines. That's kind of the driver here and we, at this point, see no reason not to issue a final site plan approval, but we'd rather wait till the DEP permits are in place, is that the sense of the board?
Yes, I agree.
That's my feeling, that's how it's always worked, I don't know of ever being other than that.
Well, they're they're, the applicant needs to have some confidence that it is approvable by the local board before they get the 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 final approval from DEP, because what if we changed our mind? I guess we
I'm I'm prepared to vote for it.
Yeah.
Given that the DEP or whatever other agency doesn't throw up something that we need to look at.
I I I think it's fair to say we need to see what DEP and and Fish and Wildlife have to say before we approve.
Yes, I think, and Jeff, what's your feeling on that?
I I wholeheartedly agree with what Manley and Hershey said. I think I think the applicant can go forward with confidence that we are in support as of right now with the pending findings from DEP and
And and we'd rather not issue an approval with conclusions of findings of fact until that's in place.
Correct.
Okay, Betsy, do you have a comment?
No comment, I feel the same.
Okay, all right, so I don't know, we, Dave, I don't think we can take a vote that says that, but we certainly can go on the record as having a unanimous consensus that this is approvable, subject to a final DEP approval, and if there's no changes that come out of that, we would move towards final approval. Does that, would that be a fair consensus, David?
Yep.
Okay.
The one thing I before, just of the applicants on it, I just, I know Chief Chief was in the audience, I believe, but I can't see him on my screen right now. But I wanted to make sure that you, did he, if he's still there, check to make sure that your apparatus can get in and out of the proposed vehicle turnaround, number one, and two, I assume you would need bollards around the transformers.
Yeah, the transformers will have to be protected and with that, that L shape at the end, you know, obviously I'll speak to them when, you know, to make sure it's going to be adequate, but I don't see an issue on that aspect.
Okay.
What about the timeframe? From once you've got an application complete, you only have 60 days to approve it.
Oh.
Yeah, that's something to think about.
Well, I think we could take a vote and extend that. If they can give us a rough idea what DEP is timeframe.
Yeah, Joe, we 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 made this, we made this complete before the last, the public hearings, that's, we're six weeks into that probably, right?
Probably. It doesn't say anything about extending anything, I don't think, but that's something you need to look at because then they would have to reapply the whole thing over again.
Yeah, no, we're not looking for that.
Yeah, could I, could I perhaps suggest that the board could approve the application? But prior to the board giving the findings of fact and conditions of approval, we would have to have that permit in hand.
If that solves the problem that Joe has correctly pointed out, that would, we, I think it's that's six, one, half dozen the other. And if we avoid a timing problem by doing it that way, that would be acceptable to me.
It'd be acceptable, as long as we can comment on the whatever approvals come down, we have to amend that.
So we we, we can find, sign a price and approval, but the issuance of conditions and findings of fact would not be done until the the DEP permitting is complete. Sean, yeah, I'm sorry, I guess I added your
Yeah, no, just um, just an idea throughout there is some of the other towns that we've worked with have put conditions of approval. They voted for it, but had conditions in the approval that all DEP and what Fish and Wildlife permits had to be accepted and approved before, and then it worked that way.
Okay. If if it's, if procedurally we're okay with issuing final site plan approval, but not writing the findings of fact and and conditions of approval till they're they're issued, if that's, that's the same, that's valid way to do it, then that that sort of accomplishes both things, is that, David, are you good with that or and?
I am, but I would want to check with with Joe. If we approve it and for some reason there's some minor tweaks, I don't see a whole lot changing going through DEP now, we've got that, the 250 foot buffer. But if there were some tweaks, can the board make modifications and adopt those plans as part of the record of Joe?
I'll jump in there, I think we can, we, if we choose they're more administrative or minor in in nature, we can choose to do that if they're, if they choose, if they, if Joe or we decide that they're major in nature, then we'd have to redo the approval.
Okay.
And I think we make that part of the approval, that we have that ability to do that. We're doing, we're doing this for the applicant, we're not doing it for us, so the applicant does not have to go all through the process again.
Yeah, right, yeah, so yeah, we want to avoid that. So with that.
I'll make that motion if you give the word and
It's a little out of order here and we asked Mr. Stortz to give comment on that, he's looking to say it, it's a out of order, but I'll I'll allow it, go ahead, Andrew.
Thank you, I was just curious because I I had one meeting with one of the gentlemen from the solar company and he came out to my house and we talked about it and and what some of the changes we see here are reflected in this. But I haven't gotten any, anything else or anything more specific and I'm wondering, when should I expect more than a promise from the company, so I know that what we talked about is actually going to happen?
It's on the plan and I'll leave that, if Sean wants to comment on that, that'd be fine.
Sure, the plan is, that is what we're putting forward to the town, that's what we're going to do. But I can absolutely write something up and have the owner of the company sign it for you, we can get it notarized and sent it over to you if that's something that works.
Well, because we had discussed a possible berm and some other things and I'm, the more I'm thinking about it, I think that's going to require removing trees from my land, it's just a lot of specific stuff that would be happening potentially on my land that isn't, I don't think is reflected on the plan.
Well, we can't, sorry.
All we are approving is what is on the plan, we're not approving anything else.
Right, right, I understand that, my, I guess my question is just, how do I know that anything is going to happen for me that was discussed, is it? I'm just kind of sitting here waiting in the dark.
Is everything that you discussed on this plan?
No. I I only ask because if part of the approval of this is that they've discussed with the abutters and they did all the other things since the last time, then I'm still not confident that what I had discussed with them is in motion whatsoever, because I I haven't gotten anything further from from one meeting.
We can put it, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
We can put it as a condition of the permit, we can put it on there.
Let's do that.
We can write it out and have it on the conditions that what
Let's do that.
A, B, and C needs to be done to have the permit done.
I think that that's very reasonable and thank you, Mr. Stortz, for that, we'll we'll, we'll make that a condition of the approval. So Manley's made a motion, but he wants words wrapped around it.
Yeah, good at that, Bill.
Jeff, you you do this one, come on.
Great. So acceptance of the plan with the conditions of IFNW and DEP approvals and permits?
Yes.
That would, that's one. With the I don't know how to handle Mr. Stortz's circumstance with permitting, with a written
I would, I would suggest that that be written documentation between the applicant and the concerned abutter regarding actions to be done on his property or next to his property.
Okay. And what else was there? There was something else.
That we would have the ability to amend it if the DEP or inland wild and fish and life throws something our way that we're not aware of, you know?
Okay, so with IFNW and DEP permits in place and the ability for the planning board to amend decisions based on those findings and the written agreement between the applicants and Mr. Stortz or the abutters.
Is there a second? Hershey or or Betsy, you said that, okay, Betsy, it was moved by Jeff and seconded by Betsy. Any further discussion?
Can I just ask a question about the the 60 days, because I know once we deem it complete, we have these, you know, there's a, there is a clock, but it it seems odd to approve something when we don't have all of the information in, and I'm wondering if it was premature then on our part that we had deemed it complete without having DEP and, you know, Fish and Wildlife weigh in, is that, is that the issue that makes us now have to do this?
It's uncommon, until a project gets completeness and they can go to, it's, and it's accepted application and it goes to hearing, applicants would typically not finish the permitting process until they get that in in place. So I think it's a, it's a, the the conditions that we come up with, I think are reasonable based on that.
I I I get that, I just, I don't, David, can you answer the question? I I just, I don't think I get my question answered exactly. David?
Yeah, sorry, I was on mute.
Oh, sorry.
I had a coughing fit earlier.
I thought maybe you fell asleep, but that's okay, all right, okay.
Yes, I understand that, I mean, it's just timing wise that, but they tech, yes, you're approving the project, but until we adopt the conditions and findings of fact and have those documents recorded, the wording, I can work on the wording to
It it's not that, that's not exactly what I'm asking, I'm asking that if if the applicant hasn't gotten in all of the information we need within those 60 days, why is the burden on us to approve something?
It isn't.
Okay.
I would, I would, I would think though
So if we don't have the DEP and the Fish and Wildlife information and it hasn't been submitted, I don't know why we are then forced to approve it without having that in front of us and having to come up with all this language to work around it, that to me is on the, you know, that's on the applicant, not on us.
Well, the, I guess the other question would be if we if the board chose to not approve the final now because we have the sort of three week loss of time or whatever it was, could that well, that 60 days or start from the sixth, I think it was the 16th meeting, was it, 15? No, 16, 16.
Well, but even so, the the applicant has had an extra three weeks to get in and resolve things with DEP and with fishing wildlife and have not, so I I, you know, I won't stand in everybody's way if they want to do this, I just don't really understand why we're forced to approve something and put conditions on when they don't have all their information and I'd like to see the DEP and the Fish and Game information before we approve it. That's all.
I'm not going to beat this to death. I I, what what's what's the provision or the provision that that sets out that 60 days? Haven't looked at that in a while.
Under site plan, it's it's within 30 days of the closure of the public hearing or within 60 days upon finding the application complete.
Then what, what's it say?
The board shall act to approve, approve with conditions or disapprove or disapprove the application. The time limit for review may be extended by mutual agreement between the planning board and the applicant.
Okay, that's what I wanted, thank you, okay.
Sure.
So we 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 could do that if we wanted to, or if the the applicant agreed, or we can approve with conditions. It's, we have, I think, I I, my personal position is we have enough protections in 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 the motion to, if anything happens, it doesn't work with what we've approved with DEP or IFNW, we can reopen the thing.
Okay, I I agree with you, Bill.
Yeah, so. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second and we've had discussion, is there any further discussion? Okay, then I'm going to take a roll call vote. Betsy?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Manley?
Hi.
Hershey?
Hi.
And I'm an I, so, okay. Okay. Very good, I think we're all set with this one tonight then. So thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah. And
Just one last thing before we go, I appreciate everybody's time. Mr. Stortz, if we could reach out tomorrow morning, I can work on the working, writing up the paperwork for you as soon as you want. And we can agree what we agree upon and what you need done on your land, just so we can get the process moving and and get it to the town as quickly as possible.
Okay. Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the other, the other old business that we were not able to do three weeks ago was the MSP number 2102 for the Singular Wireless project up at the top of the Wadi Lane next to the water tank and I believe, David, you're here, right?
I am, good evening, Mr. Jack.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, David Walsh from, introduce yourself, please.
Sure, I'm David Walsh, my firm is called Smartlink and we represent AT&amp;T and their wireless buildout and network improvements. We submitted a application to the planning board, which some time ago now, I think. And I don't have any additional information to add at this time, our application still stands. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any more.
Okay, yeah, there was, it was a the application was made and we considered a sketch plan, but in fact, it was not a sketch plan, it was a full application, that goes back a number of meetings. David? Sure, please.
So I understand you'll be building the tower, you'll be doing the communication part for the police and the fire department.
Yeah, so in our agreement, we will be providing the funds to transfer the equipment, but we will be using two-way radio, which is, which is the preferred vendor for South Berwick's municipal communications.
And so the South Berwick will be receiving a lot better communication system?
It will, the the equipment will match, as far as I know, it will be the same equipment that's currently on the tower. South Berwick will be getting improved cell service from AT&amp;T and their their municipal communication network will stay intact.
I guess to man this question, the same radio equipment that's used right now on the existing tower will be re- relocated on the new tower.
Correct, yeah, it'll migrate over, correct.
And will it be higher and a better better deal for the fire department and the police department? Or will it be the same?
Fire and police, let me just double check my plans here, so I'm not speaking out of turn. But the the top of the structure is open and available, and that is for town future use, so you will have additional height available should the town want to exercise that and when they're ready.
Joe, can you weigh in on this?
Yeah, you know, what the, you know, Dana or myself, we've discussed and we're looking at possibly getting a new repeater for the fire department, it's like $19,000 that to replace the one that's up there, to that way there, it starts brand new, so it would help. And we're supposed to, the last we knew, we were supposed to be at at almost the maximum height. So.
If you'd like, yeah, let me, let me throw the drawings up, that should help.
So it seems to me it'd be a good time to get that additional that the new equipment right now.
Well, it's like anything else, it's funding.
I understand.
We're looking into it, we're looking into it and, you know, because obviously we'd like to have it, you know, taken care of upfront.
If they're going to change it all around, that's a high, high tower to be climbing around, changing it twice.
Right, well, obviously, yes.
So I really don't see any downsides sides to this project as far as the town's concerned.
I don't either, and I think it's an improvement to for the citizens with the cell service and there's no no detriment to the fire and 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 police department. I remember when this came up, gosh, I don't know how long ago, several years ago, when they, when they, when the fire department and the police department chose to to put the the existing tower up there that provided 100% coverage of the town, that was a big deal at the time. So I'm looking at David, David's memo from mid-June and we're basically, we accepted it as a sketch plan at the time and I think we're at a point where we can accept it as a complete application, which is what the applicant is asking of us tonight. And from that point, it would go to public hearing and so forth.
I'd like to make that motion.
So Manley would make the motion that the planning board determined this is a complete application.
A second.
Any discussion?
Can I ask a question real quick?
Please.
Just on on the, I think the cover page of one of the first documents that we got, it was that it said the proposed project will maintain the existing networks supported on the site and benefit the community by improving cell coverage for both consumers and first net subscribers in the community. And I misunderstood standing what was just said that I was, I thought David was saying that everything was just going to stay the same, but there'll be potential to to improve. And did I misunderstand that? Jeff, no, not at all, there's there's a, if I could, there's a couple of different technologies in play there, so I could understand how that's confusing. So there's South Berwick's existing network, which is, you know, these whip antennas all up and down the tower, that that's going to remain intact and and exactly the same as it is. At the top of the 130 foot future structure, that's available for town use. The first net portion is a, is an AT&amp;T product. The first net portion is a, is an A T and T product that's available to first responders. Um, and it's a dedicated network for first responders. So this site, our panel antennas that we're looking to upgrade this tower to, um, to install on, that will be an improvement to the town for anyone that's using that first net network. And that could be local, state, federal, um, first responders.
I got you. So that, that, um, first net, um, technology is what you're, you'll be putting it on that, that tower. I got you.
Yes, sir. Correct.
Fantastic.
What is the timeframe for doing this? What is the timeframe for doing this project?
Once, um, once we're deemed approved, I mean, that, that is the, the next step is, is getting our approvals. So, um, depending on how long it takes for us to get through the planning and building permit process, A T and T is ready to get rolling on the construction as soon as possible, once approved.
Uh, I've got a related question. Uh, are there any other, uh, permits or approvals required other than this local approval and building permit?
That's a good question, yeah. So we're, we're, obviously, we're a very regulated industry. Um, there's, there's a lot of other steps we're going through. So we are, we are very far along in our compliance filing, which covers our F A A, and historic concerns with the view shed. Uh, in this case, the structure is not drastically changing, so, um, there are no concerns there. There are no F A A concerns. We've already ruled that out. It's not tall enough to trigger lighting. The, the final remaining piece is, uh, so we have our design set is the, uh, electrical, um, easement run. And part of that is, uh, we will need to cross over the Berwick Academy property. We are in touch with South Berwick Academy and answering a handful of questions on Central Main Power's, uh, best build practices when it comes to that trench work. But other than that, um, A T and T is prepared to, to move forward with construction.
Okay, we had the mo- motion to, uh, find this application complete has been made and seconded and there's been some discussion. Is there more discussion or can we vote on it?
I just had a question for Joe. Can the path that's on the tower, uh, that would upgrade the police and the fire, somewhat less than the nineteen, or do you have to spend the whole nineteen thousand right up front to get the path that's on the tower?
For the, both departments, for the two repeaters that are up there right now, we got a quote was thirty-nine thousand dollars, you know, it was under forty thousand dollars. So twenty thousand dollars between the two departments. You know, we could have new equipment up on, on theirs that we wouldn't have to worry about for over twenty years. You know, it, it, you know, but that's something that we got to work that out with the town. I mean, it's just, you know, it's, it's a budget item, so that's something we're looking at.
Well, I'd encourage you to try to get it done, but I'm prepared to move forward.
Okay.
We're, you know, and, and that's, that's between, you know, us right now and the town, that's all.
Yeah.
I mean, we've got to try to come up with, um, there's money available, but it's, it's up to the powers to be to make the determination.
Okay, I'm going to move the question, the, the question, uh, for deemed completeness. And so I'll call a roll call vote. Uh, Jeff Menahan?
Aye.
Uh, Betsy Randall?
Aye.
Uh, Hershey?
Aye.
Manley?
Aye.
And I'm an I, so that's unanimous. Okay, so, uh, we could, uh, we could, uh, the next thing is to schedule a public hearing. Is there any reason, David, that you would not be ready at our next meeting?
Uh, no, we'll be prepared.
Okay, and, uh, Amy and Joe getting the stuff out is no problem for two weeks from now?
Yep, all set.
That would be, that would be the, uh, 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 July twenty-second.
Excellent. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much, David.
I'll give you your screen back too.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, that's great.
Be July twenty-first.
Yeah, twenty-first July, two weeks from tonight. Thank you. Uh, I, uh, let me see, I've got my viewing right here. There we go, okay. Okay, we moved down to, uh, the discussion items. I want to re, I would like to reverse the items. I'd like to deal with the marijuana items first and the return to in-person second, if that's okay? Yep, sure. And, uh, so after we had that workshop, uh, last week and, uh, we, uh, finalized pretty much our recommendations, which included, and we'll go through them specifically in a minute, uh, with the material that David got out this afternoon. Excuse me? Okay, and the fir- the first one is the, the recommendation for the modified ordinance for the, um, uh, medical storefront. And then the second one is the medical cultivation ordinance.
And is that something you have to ask for? So you would just go to Jen and?
Oh. Maybe.
This is, okay, uh, and then, um, and then the third thing was we were going to make a recommendation to the town council that they, uh, research and enact a marijuana licensing provision that we would not be necessarily involved with, but we make that recommendation to the council. So with that, um, uh, David Galbraith, uh, sent us and, uh, a memo this afternoon and the two draft ordinances. And let me, uh, so the memo just did the background and what, where we've been and why we're here. And then there's a two draft ordinance. As I'll pull up the medical, um, storefront first, if I can find it. There it is. Uh, I'm going to share my screen. Whoops. Uh, wrong hand, bear with me. Where am I here? Uh, there it goes. Um, that big, okay. Now here's the, uh, is this the right document, David? David, okay, okay. Um, so here it is. This is the?
Sorry, I was on mute. Yes, it is.
Okay, so, uh, this is, we went through this in some detail last time. Um, we, um, uh, the Table A would include a part of the B B one district, which is, uh, defined by the overlay, which David has put out separately. Um, and it includes the I, and they require a major site plan there and a major site plan in the I one district, not the I two district. We took that out. Uh, there's an overlay map, which we'll look at in a minute. Um, the, we went through the, uh, definitions and we modified setback from schools. We modified, well, we modified was the location had to be in the B one, in the overlay zone and more than a thousand feet from existing schools, which, uh, if you go to the overlay zone, that's more than a thousand feet, but that's, that's fine. We thought it was a good idea to have both those standards in there. And we had a, a minimum distance between approved stores of five hundred feet, which, uh, we went to the maps, the two existing stores we have now on Lower Main Street, uh, you couldn't put any more down there that are not five hundred feet, so that would take care of that. And we would have this non-complying one next to the post, across from the post office. Okay, and that's that. And then we also clarified the odor control requirements, taking out the, uh, exclusion for, um, if it's prepackaged goods, we decided it needed it anywhere and anyway. And then we added to, uh, uh, allow the code and post, code enforcement officer to deal with complaints and if necessary, have things come back to the planning board. And the other thing we added that, uh, was, uh, we, but we, uh, fine-tuned the language here, that's just wordsmithing on the inspections, but we added a section on changes in ownership so that if the, the use of a land is carried with the permit, but because the ownership has to be by a registered caregiver, if the ownership changes, they have to show that the new owner has the same credentials as the approved owner, and if not, then it may have to come back to the planning board. So that's pretty straightforward and, uh, we went through this in some detail last week. Uh, what I'd like to do is to, um, make this our recommended, recommended ordinance, uh, that gets forwarded to the town council. And we have the ability to, I don't think we have the requirement to hold a planning board public hearing on ordinance changes. I think for time, because there is a time element on this, uh, sometime in August that the moratorium expires. I think I would, I would suggest that we forward this to the town council immediately and, uh, when they get done with it, we, they hold a joint hearing with the town council and the planning board and we don't, we don't have a separate planning board hearing now because the timeframes are getting awfully short and I'm not sure it adds anything. But I'm, I'd be open to.
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, with the motion would be?
We've spent enough time on this.
Okay, so would the motion, would the motion be to forward this, uh, uh, ordinance change to the town council for their consideration and, uh, request a joint public hearing?
And a recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
And he just got, uh, Manley's, uh, moved it and he gives a second.
I second.
Second by Hershey, thank you. Any discussion?
Um, just, um, I know, I, I totally understand I keep beating this dead horse, um, but about the licensing and I understand what you said, Bill, is it's sort of town councils, um, you know, it's in their court to do that. Is that a, um, can we add that in there that we're strongly suggesting they focus on that? Or will they just do that?
No, no, that'll be our third recommendation, I hope.
Okay.
I think we're going to recommend the two ordinances. We just did one. And then, uh, and then I'm going to, I'd like to move a, a motion to make that recommendation specifically.
Okay, I, I like that. Great.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded and discussed. Uh, I'll call the roll, uh, to move this on to the town council. Uh, first is Jeff.
Aye.
Next is Betsy.
Aye.
Next is Hershey.
Aye.
Next is Manley.
Aye.
And I'm an I. Very good, that's great. This has been a bit of a long haul. So let's, uh, I'm going to stop the share. And we're going to have a similar one. Uh, this would be the medical cultivation uh, ordinance. Uh, let me get this right up. Is this the right one?
Oh, Bill?
Yes.
Excuse me, can I, I don't mean to be rude, but should, uh, the board also look at the, uh, proposed, uh, map?
Oh, yes. No, thank you very much. Thank you. I apologize for that, yeah. Uh, uh, David prepared a couple of maps. Let me share my screen again. I'm sorry, David, I overlooked that.
No problem. Just want to get, sure they get moved at the same time.
Yeah, that's right. That's great. Uh, I apologize for that. So there's, you've got two different scales.
Yeah.
Here, here, here's the lower Main Street part. It's from Berwick Road to the Rollinsford Town Line. It's basically all of Lower Main Street. So this is the piece of the B one that we would include in the overlay. And let me get, pull up the other, uh, view of it. Come on. Here we go. Okay, so this is the same, same thing at a different scale. It's from Berwick Road. Let me make it bigger now. It's got the shading on it. It's, uh, Lower Main Street from the Berwick Road, uh, next to Butler Street. All the, all the lots that are but Main Street down to the, down to the Rollinsford line. So, so, um, Manley, I'd like you to amend your motion to include these two maps to describe the overlay.
I'd be happy to do that, but what is the other green areas that, uh, aren't on Lower Main Street?
Those are, those are B one areas. That, these are all B one sections, but this is just the B one section that would include, that, that's included in this overlay.
I see.
Yeah.
I, I make that motion. I amend the motion.
Thank you. And a second, someone?
A second.
Second from Hershey, made by Manley, seconded by Hershey. Uh, call a roll again, Hershey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Betsy?
Aye.
Manley?
Aye.
No, I'm an I. Thank you for clarifying that, David.
No problem.
Nice maps, David. They look good.
Okay, so let's, uh, let's pull this one up. Okay, I'm going to share my screen again. If I can find the right tab, where the heck is it? Uh, share screen, and there it is. Now, this is the, uh, second ordinance that's been in front of us for months here. And it's the Medical Marijuana Cultivation and Growing Facility Ordinance. We've kicked this around a lot. We spent a lot of time on, on it last week at the, uh, at that workshop. The, uh, uh, it would be allowed in one zoning ordinance and that would be the I one as a major site plan. The definition's critical and important. Uh, and, uh, it has to do with defining this as a use so that once it's described as use, it's bound by the zoning ordinance that we have here and it's not, not vague. Um, um, Betsy, uh, we made one change to, we talked about it before. There, there was some confusion between, uh, caregiver and registered caregiver. And, um, I think we were talking about three or more to allow caregivers, but not the registered caregivers for growing. And, um, the, the, there's no, there's no, um, limitation to the scenario that you were concerned about, I don't think, with a, a, a normal grower that anyone can grow as a patient. But the registered caregiver, uh, that, that we do want to limit to two. And, um, I want to thank, uh, Mark Zinser or Greg Zinser for, for pulling that out.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I, was there an email that went out? I didn't.
Uh,
I, I was talking about registered caregivers. I wasn't talking about just anybody.
Okay. So registered caregivers would be people who are registered to um, grow the five hundred foot canopy.
Yes.
So, okay, then, then you could have, you could have a thousand feet of canopy under your scenario.
Yeah, if you had two growers.
If you had two registered caregivers. Yeah.
Uh, so you would prefer it to stay at three?
Yes, I would still, I still want it at three.
Okay. Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, isn't the main state, doesn't the Office of Marijuana Policy state that it's two or more themselves? Wasn't that their suggestion?
I don't know.
I, I believe so.
There's a difference between patients, if you're a patient and have a medical card, I think, then one of them is if you're, uh, patients with, uh, medical cards and the others for registered caregivers.
Registered caregivers, um, like people who are doing it in the, in their own home. If they have a medical card themselves, they can grow it for themselves and five other individuals. And the state lays out how much you can grow and things like that. And while we are talking about those sort of home-based, you know, you're growing for your five clients or what have you, um, limiting that at two, so they'd be limited at that five hundred square, uh, five hundred square feet per. The other thing that could be limited is also, um, put some kind of standard in, for example, a quarter of the, uh, size of the household or buildings, existing buildings could be converted and then used, uh, to X size, you know, up to a thousand square feet. Um, or as defined by the state or however you'd want to do that.
So can I, can I, I, I just need some clarity here. So, um, if we made this ordinance two or more, it would limit registered caregivers who normally like could have two on their property growing to only the industrial area. Is that what you're saying? So by making it three, we allow people who are, um, registered caregivers growing on their home property, the, they're allowed to do, like, there's, if there's two of them, say there's a couple, okay.
So in that case, Betsy would be, Betsy is correct in that, in that way, would be, it would be three. That, because I'm thinking three or more. So yes, we want to do allow two people at the household.
I just, yeah, I just have, have to say, these are not people who are in this to make millions of dollars.
Oh, right.
These are, these are farmers in the state of Maine. I just, I can't, and I can't get by that. I'm sorry.
No, I'm, I'm with you, Betsy. I agree.
Okay.
Um, I wish there was a way. I wish there was a way to, sorry, give people the option to. I didn't think of this as, I thought of this as something that you could do if you wanted to do, like if you wanted to gang together, right? That it wouldn't eliminate the option of the home growers, basically home registered caregivers continuing to do what they were doing, but I see that. That doesn't really work out, so I'm with Betsy in this one.
And this isn't a storefront, this is.
No, 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 really, yeah, I realize that.
There's two or more, they, are they going to be required to come before the planning board? My concern is.
Yes.
Doesn't make any difference who they are, where they are, is they should not be able to. Ruin the quality of life of their neighbor by the smell specifically.
Whoever meets this definition needs to come before the planning board for a major site plan, whether it's two or three.
Well, that's good.
Okay, yeah, okay.
I, I personally think we ought to go with a state model of two or more, they've got some pretty good people that. I'm up for these recommendations, but.
No, two people are allowed to.
Right.
Now, is what I'm saying, so to, in order for us to align with what the state says, it should, we need to say three or more. Because then that still allows two people to not have to spend money and time and energy. Putting together an application and going through this whole process.
All right, well, we're not going to put this to a vote, but let's just look for a consensus, so I know where Betsy sits, I know where Hershey sits, Jeff?
I, I, I see Betsy's point.
Okay.
Making it three.
Okay. And I could go either way, and I'm not going to follow my sword over this, so I, let's, let's put it back into three.
Okay.
Okay, okay. And so then the other thing is, the important thing was, we can limit the total, the maximum size of one of these things. And what we have in is red, because we don't have a, I don't think a clear consensus amongst this group. And we were going to assign that problem to the town council. And the, the, what we have now is 5,000 square feet of cultivation area, which would allow. One of these facilities to have 10 registered caregivers. It could be less, it could be more. And I don't think we have a consensus of the planning board, what the number is, because we've talked about it several times. So I think we're passing this along with that as a, as a point of discussion to the, to the, to the town council, is that correct?
So why don't we move this then?
Well, we got to do the rest of it first, we get there.
Would, would you like to, if, if the board agrees with that, would you like some note added to that? Saying size to be reviewed?
Yeah, say, say, this is a nominal recommendation, could be reconsidered by the, by the, by the town council. My, my personal feeling is, is, is strong, but it's just my own, is that 5,000 square feet is plenty. And that, that this would, this would allow someone to have 10 growers, which is, in my view, a lot. But it would, it would not allow industrial type operations. So it couldn't, couldn't be 20 or 30, which would, in my view, be like an industrial operation. I think 5,000 is the appropriate number, because it allows it to be of interest in the industrial zone perhaps. But it doesn't invite industrial scale growing, but we didn't have consensus on.
I'm, I'm with you, Bill. I don't think it's that we didn't have consensus, I think we just didn't have enough information, but I, you know, that's fine, I think that's reasonable, let's move it along.
So, okay, good, okay, all right. And that was a typo, I think, that was that, we, various things. The, the nuts and bolts of this ordinance, in my view, are that, that paragraph right there, and I think we've worked it to death. We had separation of facilities, they had to be sited at least 500 feet from another.
And, and we agree that could be within the same property, though.
Where do we end up on that, David?
That was, that was still open, whether or not we even wanted to address this thing, which is why I left it in. In red.
I, I thought we had a lot, a lot of record in here somewhere.
We did talk about making that a single lot of record, but then we also talked about, what if someone then decides to split their lot up? And into five pieces and then. Where it's really essentially not changing anything, as long as fleece and fire could get in there.
Okay. All right, that's good.
Do, do we want a separation regardless of?
Yes.
I, I don't.
Can it be on the same, are, are we saying on the same, as long as there's 500 feet between them or? I, I, I think if, if the board wants to allow multiple facilities. So say like someone builds a 5,000 square foot facility, and they suddenly decide to build another building at 5,000 square feet, does it? Does it matter if it's on one lot or two, but you keep doing that, you're going to get a much larger. You know, economies of scale, more traffic, more.
No, I think, I think. My view is to limit the number of these. We accommodate the, the, the ability to do it at a small scale, but we limit the numbers, I think, I think, I think they should be, they should be separated.
I agree.
My, my view is that. The only area that this is going to be allowed in is the industrial area. That area has not been used for industry or anything else, and that. What makes the difference as far as the town concerned? Whether it's on the same lot, a different lot, or what it's on is. I'd like to see the industrial area developed as much as possible in the taxes.
Yes, but the whole, the whole point of this ordinance is to limit the scale of these types of operations.
And I think we have, just by putting in, into the industrial area, it really has protected the town. A large amount.
But, but, but do we want the entire industrial area to be a series of these types of facilities? I don't think we do.
Well, I don't know, I don't think that anybody is taking advantage of the industrial area.
Are they likely to be less advantage of the industrial area? If, if.
I, I think that once these facilities that come in. They're going to be a deterrent for anyone else wanting to get close to them because of the smell.
Right, and you're right, so that, that, that supports the distance between them, the 500-foot distance.
I think starting smaller is, is a wise decision. Anybody in the town can petition to change it as the time comes, so.
Or, or we can live with it and change our minds in five years.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think doing the, the one per lot is, is a wise decision.
We don't have one per lot, we just have a separation distance between facilities.
Okay, so it would be, yeah, five, 500 between facilities, so they could end up on the same lot.
That'd be tough to do, that'd be tough.
Right, yeah.
So, so the way I've got it right now.
I'd like to move this.
We're getting there, Manley, we're getting there. The, what, what are you going to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that right now, I put, no cultivation facility shall be sited within 500 feet of another cultivation facility. The distance between the property shall be measured in a straight line between nearest property boundaries of the proposed. So we want to go property line to property line, not facility to facility, correct?
That, that's correct.
Okay, good.
So, so I think you, you could put, you could put that in black, that doesn't need to be red.
Okay.
And, and I think, I think that this, this note can go away.
Okay, I got it.
Numbering 11, what, what's? That's the number, I got you, you're fine.
You, you're also okay with number nine, the hours of operation?
Yeah, 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 so just fix the numbering, right?
Okay.
Right, right. The rest of these things were pretty non-controversial with the, with odor control and. Security, all that. We didn't change much in the original draft on that. Signage, the same thing. And the ownership, change of ownership, which is the parallels what we did for the caregiver stores.
Yeah, my, my last draft, we had talked about the issue, but I included it. Because originally we just looked at that issue as far as the retail stores. But I, as we had talked about it, I included it here, so.
Yeah, I think, I think it needed to be, yeah, I would do that. Okay, so with the, we'll take the red thing out, and the only, the only thing we're leaving in. As a question. Was this number here? And with, with, with the, what we, with our, with a footnote that says we want to limit size and not be of industrial scale. But that could be thought of an increase or decrease.
Okay, so I've just got to renumber these.
Yeah, okay.
Ways should be 13, I believe.
Yeah, good. Then with these changes, I would, I would suggest that we also forward this to the town council. With the, for expediency, say that we would withhold our public hearing until a joint public hearing with the council.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Manley, go.
I second.
Seconded by Hershey, that's great. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call, go, Betsy?
Aye.
Hershey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Manley?
Aye.
And I'm an I, okay, that's great. Then the last one, let me pull this up. I had, okay, I'm going to share my screen again. This, these are notes that we had going into the June 30th workshop, and the, the third. Recommendation we could take right from here. And that we would recommend to the town council that the planning board recommends the town council develop licensing procedures. For all marijuana businesses, including caregivers, caregiver cultivation, medical storefronts, medical cultivators, et cetera. Model on, win the main or other existing licensing ordinances. The objective would be to provide the town with a basis to independently monitor legal and authorized operations. And also provide the town with an independent basis to identify unauthorized or illegal operations, which is up in the air right now. Finally, provide the town with strengthened basis to enforce performance standards. And I observe, and I suggest that this is not a planning board process, it is not a land use issue. But rather an administrative and management action. Do it as a town council, perhaps with an advisory committee, and I'd be happy to. If they set up an advisory committee, I would be happy to encourage anybody on the planning board with interest to participate. Is, is this, this gets at Jeff's issue all along, and in my discussions with a bunch of people. On the board and off the board privately. I've become convinced that licensing is going to be the, what has to happen to get control of these things. And I, but I'm, but I'm very concerned that it, it, it'd be dealt with directly by the administrative arm of the town. Including the town council, it does not need to go through the planning board because it's not a land use issue. So if anyone, if people are comfortable making this recommendation, we could talk about it first, David.
Yes, I was just going to say, in order to forward these two documents with the revisions that we've just talked about. I've thought that what may be best is I draft a memo from the board with your signature, for example. Giving an overview of, here's what's been done, here are the ordinances, you know, and, and just giving an overview and saying, here are the two documents. And, and including this within the memo saying, the licensing issue is key because. And I'll just let that straight out into the memo.
Okay, that, that would be satisfactory to me.
And I can, and I'll have that for your signature.
Yeah. Is the board comfortable with it, taking this position?
Yes, I, I said, let's do it.
Any other comments?
Yes, I'm good.
I'll take, I'll, I'll take a vote on it, so that, so that we can, we can act on it as, I'll accept, I'll, I'll, I'll take a motion to accept. The, this in what becomes David's, excuse me, final memo. Yeah, I'll make that motion. Moved by Jeff?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Manley, any discussion? Okay, Betsy Randall?
Aye.
Hershey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Manley?
Aye.
And I'm an I, okay, that's great. That's a lot of work, guys, we, it's been a lot of, it's been a long road. And we hope that we've been constructive. I, Barbara Hopkins, talk to bear, sure, hands up, so please, please, Barbara, floor is yours.
I'm very disappointed. I'm going to try to compose myself, because I think that you are passing the buck in a sense. You know, you're limiting, you're calling land use or odor control, you're including setbacks. I'm concerned about the setback being 500 feet for cultivation. But 1,000 feet from schools for the storefronts, why isn't it the same? That's one of my concerns. Bill, you specifically said it's to limit the scale of operations, that's the, the duty of the planning board. So, I could not read the audience or mention cultivation. My concern also, is there a light pollution piece to that, where the lighting is not going to create all kinds of light?
On, on that, the, the ordinance is only for the marijuana aspects of it, they have to meet the rest of the zoning ordinance regarding all things inside development. Which, which includes those things.
Okay, all right, that, all right, thank you. So, in your memo to the town council, from everything that's been done thus far, you're protecting. But there isn't anything that's protecting the ordinary homeowner in a neighborhood. We have a couple of doors up from me. We have a rental where they're growing a large amount of marijuana. I don't, I haven't been in there, I don't measure it, but I do know that you got a letter for the meeting that was canceled. Because of technical difficulties, the neighbors up there can't push their kids on the swing without having the smell in their face. So I guess, I think about Robert Frost's home mending wall. Good fences, Bruce Whitney used to say it all the time, good fences make good neighbors. They are afraid to talk to the people next door, you know, they don't want to alienate their neighbors. But if there isn't any kind of an ordinance against smell. Any caregiver could have plants right up next to somebody else's house, depending upon where the caregivers are. So I think that that is a land use. That is a, you're doing the smell, you're doing it for all of these other things, but not for the caregiver. I think that needs to be part of that memo, so that the person who lives next door, if they're having issues. No one's ever complained about my flowers and my lilacs, but I, that smell is very, very distinctive, and it's not pleasant. So, so I guess I would ask that you put. Licensing to me is like, I don't know, you know, you have to have certain background check or whatever, you've got to have those things. But this is a land use, this is something like a property owner. And, and where are the business kinds of things, you know, if there's not a site plan? And then also I'm thinking about, you know, the ability to do retail. I heard, I think it was David, you said that they could only have five patients, which doesn't present a lot of traffic. But then we've got the person who's up on 161 of Gunkwit, who Jack Karika said, oh, it's just a caregiver, he can do what he, he's, he's within the law. And he's advertising on the internet, he's advertising on the radio, he's open, you have hours on this for the businesses. But his hours are from 10 to midnight, that's in a neighborhood. So I'm seeing this place, two doors up, and I'm not just speaking for myself, I'm going to, I'm further away, I'm not going to see it all the time. I'm talking about my neighbors. What, what recourse do they have? And this is a renter, it is not even the owner, so that, that's where I plead with you guys. To please put something stronger in that memo, and if we don't do it soon, it's kind of like the, you know. Ron's place across from the post office, it's going to be grandfathered in. So that's my concern. We have 30 caregivers, we have, I don't know how many residents in this town. Where is it that a resident can go to Joe, can go to the planning board and say, hey, what's going on here? This is really offending my quality of life. If it affects my quality, your vocation affects my quality of life, where. If it affects my quality, your vocation affects my quality of life, where is the recourse? So I, I'm just passionate about this and, you know, uh, I know you guys do a lot of hard work. Uh, but, and I, and I think that the state, you know, reneged on a lot of this, they should have had a lot of these things in place. But the lawyer told all of us, we can regulate further. So why can't we have? Some recommendations on an ordinance for caregivers that helps to protect ordinary neighbors? That's all I'm asking. I, you know, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, people can use it, I'm not against the, the use. I, I'm against it affecting. My neighbors trying to push their kids on a swing and you guys should have all received that letter.
Okay.
I'm done. That's. Please.
My, my, my comment to you, Barbara, is. What you're, you're, the issues you're talking about have to do with enforcement. You don't have to do with land use ordinance, this has to do with enforcement, and I believe licensing is the, is the, uh. Uh, the mechanism to do that, and I think the best way to do that is as we're recommending. So thank you.
Uh, Bill?
Yep.
Can I ask?
I don't understand why it's after, uh, chapter one forty changes. Chapter one forty changes could take another year.
It's not, I, I, I'm not gonna engage in this, Barbara. You can stay and say whatever you want, that's fine.
For, just for residents' knowledge, who should they call to check on, to check on, uh. If people have like their caregiver license or whatever with the state?
That, that, that question is very valid. And without a local ordinance, we can't, you, you, we call someone, office of, office of marijuana office, no one knows anything. The, the police chief won't say anything. Joe can't say anything. There has to be an ordinance, it has to be a mechanism where people can enforce the local law.
No, I'm just wondering, like, if somebody, you know, if somebody ha- is. Um, growing, growing marijuana, ha- and it's, you know, being expensive or whatever, can, who, who do they, you know? It, it could be a caregiver, I mean, there's, there are people who can do this legally. I have, I have neighbors that do it legally, I don't smell a thing. And I just wanted to say that you can call, I feel like there's a place that you can call to find out if somebody is actually a caregiver or not.
No, there isn't. There isn't. That, without, without a local ordinance, where, 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 sure caregivers have to get a license, which they can be required to do. The, 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 uh, um, uh, the identity of caregivers is anonymous. This is what, the, the, the state screwed us, in my opinion, but let's not go there. They, 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 they got, they got, they got all these things going. And they didn't have good answers to the questions that were asked, and they, what do you do if you got a neighbor who's growing in his barn? What do you do? You go to talk to Joe, you go talk to the Kalishi, you go talk to the office of marijuana, what do you do? You can't do anything. And, and, and people have done it, and they, they're coming up against brick walls, which is why we need licensing. In a, in a nutshell, we can, we can, we can identify, you can identify caregivers, they gotta get a license, then you know. Doesn't mean you regulate them, but it means though who they are, because they got licensed, they're paying a fee, or whatever it is. And then if someone is not got a license and they're growing marijuana, then the local, uh, authorities can enforce the law. And we can't do that now. That's why I, I concluded what I've concluded, and it's not a planning board issue, right? Just isn't.
Yeah.
Right. Well, the state has, um, just for some background with the, with the, like, home caregivers, where if I was a home gate caregiver. If I have a medical card myself, I could go for myself, five under, five other individuals. Kinds of things, I, what I've called the Office of Marijuana, uh, Marijuana Policy. Before and talk to them, they have said if they are just growing for themselves and their five. Uh, their five clients. Then the towns can't touch them and they cannot. Even, we can't even get. Who those state licenses are issued for.
Correct, but, but you can, but they, but they can be required to get a local license. And, and once you got a local license, then you can do something. Then, then if there is, uh, some adverse reactions, you got a mechanism to do it. Right now, we don't. And to Barbara's comment, uh, um, I, I, I live in her neighborhood, I know who she's talking about. I've smelled it down there, it's not right. And, and, but we can't do anything because no one will answer our questions now. If we had licensing, then they might be able to. That's my feeling.
Hey, Bill?
Yeah?
Can I ask a question? Just like we have a nor- a noise ordinance, is it unreasonable to have a smell ordinance or an odor ordinance? I mean, since we're already controlling odor in parts of it, are we not allowed to enforce, you know, have that in other places?
Uh, it needs to be tied to the licensing.
Yeah, it doesn't though. I mean, we don't, we have, we have odor control as part of our. Ordinance, part of our zoning code has, you know, requirements around odor, and we certainly have. A noise ordinance, why would an odor ordinance be, is that, that something we could do?
I could tell you, from my experience as an engineer dealing with stinky things.
Yeah.
It's very, very hard to do it.
Okay.
Because it's very subjective and someone's unimaginable stink is someone else's, huh, no big deal. It, there's, there's no, there's no, there's no. It's not like a, you can measure decibels.
Right.
You can't measure stink. It's very hard to do, people have tried.
Okay.
Would, would it, um, could I suggest maybe, uh, if the board is at a consensus, it seems like we've been talking about the actual. Caregivers, the small growers in their homes is a problem for. A lot of the folks who have been attending these meetings should. Would the board be okay with me writing a paragraph in the memo, obviously for your guys' review and approval before it went to the council? Saying there is concerns about the small caregiver in residential neighborhoods or in, within the town just in general. And that. Oh, well, you know, look into, uh, the council, look into regulating that specific thing. I know I'd need some discussions with the state and probably the town attorney on how far you could go on that, but I don't think it's. I think it would echo what we've heard here.
I think, I think. The whole concept of licensing, we haven't laid out what it would be, but we've laid out, I think our recommendation will be it. It, it, you, you, you require every marijuana business to get a license, and then you can, if it's a business, you can. If it's not a business, then you can't. Because the legislature said you can grow pot.
Well, and that, that is true, because you, any individual can grow it in their own property.
Right.
Up to a certain amount. I, I smell it every day. The guy grows it next door, there ain't anything I can do about it.
Right, right.
I mean, that's reality, because everybody can grow it in their own property if they want to.
If, if, if they're doing it as a business, then it can be regulated.
Correct.
But if it's a business, I can grow aragolds, I can grow pot.
Correct. I mean, it is a tough section.
Yeah, yeah.
It is, it's tough.
The, 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 the legislature la- landed this on all of us statewide, and we're, we're dealing with it, we're trying to deal with it. At, at the, at the business level. On the ordinance level, and we tightened up these ordinances, I believe, we've done a good job of it, and I think we need to go forward and finish the job of licensing. That's my feeling.
And maybe, Bill, could we, could we add to the memo, you know, um. Or suggest that, um, every, that everyone licensed, maybe we don't have a major site plan review for the two or the one. But maybe town council can say, well, we're gonna license everybody.
Yeah, that, that, if that's the Wyndham, that's the Wyndham, that's the Wyndham main model. If you look at it, that's exactly what it does. And it, it, it allows, it allows the town, the community, to take action on marijuana businesses. If you, if you read, read the town of Wyndham, uh, ordinance, it, it, it does what we're talking about. It's not a planning board issue, it's not a land use issue, it's, it's, it's a, an enforcement issue that falls from the licensing.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. I see Mary Ann, mine are with her hand up. Greg Zinser.
First of all, thank you for all the work you've done, and thank you all for being so open and, and to really looking deeply into the need to provide that. Local regulation of all marijuana businesses in our town. Um, I think that's really important, and I think that as I walked neighborhoods, my own neighborhood, what. I heard from several people was, you know, I just wanted to run a little hair shop in my home and I have to be regulated, for example, you know? So I do think that it is very important that we stay right at that home-based business level as a starting point. The, the thing that, that I noticed in your memo is the last line, and the last line is to wait. Wait until the state has finished.
No, 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 Mary Ann, that's not true. What I said is, wait until we get these one forty ordinances done, which we just did tonight.
Oh, thank you, okay, because we can't afford.
No, no, what I said was, the urgent matter with the town was to get these two ordinances in place. When that's done, move on with licensing, that's what I said.
Thank you. Oh, great, so, and I think that that is critical, and I think that you're providing, um, some. Good support for what we have asked, and I, I thank you for that, and hopefully as we move forward. You know, I'd love to see that, anything a thousand feet from all schools, frankly. Uh, and I, I think that hopefully maybe the, the town council will grapple with that. Um, high school kids drive. So, um, you know, I, I'm hoping you'll consider that, but I really do appreciate what you've done, so thank you.
So, I, from my point of view, um. We've done what we could, but now it's on you to go after the town council to get your. Uh, concerns met and tell them, uh, what you're telling us. Uh, so that they, they are really ultimately the, uh. People who make the laws, we recommend, but we don't make them, they make them. They need to hear from you continually until you, uh, get your concerns met.
Yeah, right. Um, I gotta move this along, but I'll, Greg Zinser had his hand up, and if you want to speak, Greg, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. Uh, you know, I, I wish from the beginning the town would have made the town attorney available for every meeting. Uh, to get the questions answered, because in these situations, we have fifteen people in fifteen different interpretations of law. I strongly disagree, uh, with the, the assertion that state law already allows two or more. I think if you go back and examine it, semantics are everything when it comes to the law. And what we see is there is a clear and unequivocal difference between caregivers and registered caregivers. Caregivers are what I would agree with Betsy on, would be the farmers. Those are the people that are looking to grow six, twelve plants, have a few patients that are within the household. I would argue that you frankly can't even regulate them. The registered caregivers, however, are a whole different category of individual. Registered caregivers can cultivate five hundred square feet. They can manufacture and they can also process marijuana products. So you're talking about a five hundred square foot canopy, but you're also talking about other ancillary activities. These individuals are a business. They need to be regulated as a business. Right now, what I'm walking away from is the planning board is saying. Greg Zinser over on Back Acres Lane, with all of the acreage that surrounds me and a neighbor over here that does have five acres. Well, I guess that's not an issue anymore, because it doesn't matter. That individual can get together with his neighbor and they can, uh, uh, form a collective of two people, they can each have their five hundred square feet. Conduct their cultivation stuff, and there's not a damn thing I can do about it. Registered caregivers, while they can't have a storefront, can still sell out of their home. They can still conduct those activities. So I would encourage everyone to go back and really look and examine the laws I have. And I'm free and I will be happy to admit when I'm wrong, but there is a huge difference between a caregiver. And a registered caregiver. I would strongly encourage the board. And trust me when I say we will be going to the town council, because you have already acted on it, and I respect that. I do believe, uh, Bill, I, I, I'm happy to hear the licensing aspect. But the other thing, when we all mentioned the Wyndham ordinance, the one thing that's not coming up is Wyndham regulates them as a home occupation. The town of Berwick regulates caregiver, registered, keyword, registered caregivers, as an accessory use on the structure. So that way, me as a, 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 an individual. When there's traffic coming up and down my road all night long, all day long, we've seen how it goes out in a Gumpit Road. But we don't have to use that as an example, because it's happening in other areas of town. Let's just admit it, it's okay. Marijuana is here, it's not going away. But we need to have protections for me, for each of you, that when the cars are coming up and down the road, when the odors are getting out of control. And to a degree, listen, I get it, there's gonna be a certain amount that you can't do anything about, the caregiver. You can't touch, we're gonna smell marijuana, we're gonna have some small-scale cultivation going on. State law allows that to happen. Marijuana is legal, there's nothing illegal about marijuana anymore. And so you'd need to be looking at a land use category to regulate these people. Licensing is, is awesome, and it's something that needs to happen, but we're missing the land use category to regulate them. As a home occupation, because these folks are businesses. The registered caregiver is a business occupation, if they want to be legitimized, then they should follow the rules like everybody else. And homeowners should be afforded the protection, so I would encourage. The planning board to go back, revisit, whoever made the motion can, can motion to revisit and, and, and redo the vote. That's perfectly allowed within Robert's rules to do that. Go back and regulate them and say, two or more. Because even in that situation, a single caregiver can still be next door to me, and they can still grow their five hundred square feet. What you're saying is now they can be growing a thousand square feet in all their activities. That is inappropriate in a residential area, or frankly, next to anybody else. We're not anti-marijuana, it's here, it's staying, you need, it's all about the zoning, you need to protect the neighborhoods. And that's what I would encourage you to do, these are business people, and they need to be regulated, and it is a land use category. Home occupation or an accessory use, who do I call? Office of Marijuana Policy has two people. That investigations for them in the whole entire state of Maine. I've worked with the state, I've been in government for twenty years, good luck getting anybody to come down here and, and address these concerns in any way. You cannot rely on the state to come down and take care of your problems.
Right.
Dropped it in our lap, and now we have an obligation to the citizens to regulate them. And no one wants to have any more regulations, I get it, but you need to regulate them, because it's the right thing to do for all the homeowners, and, you know, in the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Phew, okay, so, um. I'm gonna take a deep breath here, and I'm gonna turn the page on our next agenda item. Um, uh, which is the, um. Uh, sorry, which is the. Remote participation policy for. Municipal boards. As you know, we came up between our last meeting and this meeting, apparently legislature. They had emergency authorization for, uh, remote meetings that expired, I guess. In, 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 in the end of June. And, um, uh. And so they dealt with that in emergency, and they put out a draft policy. Uh, requiring, or not requiring, but to requiring that new policies be adopted by each board, including our board. Uh, to, um, uh, deal with remote participation. The, um. Let me share my screen here. Um, their policy presumed in-person. Participation by all board members and most of the public. Unless there was. Specific circumstances, uh, that were unique or something like that. I, I read that and I, I disagreed with it. And I marked up the policy to reflect. They're, they're presuming that everyone's comfort with the pandemic and COVID is gone. Which I don't believe is true. And I can tell you personally, it's not true. And so I, what I've drafted for our consideration, uh, is a remote participation policy, which allows it to go either way. Which a lot requires there to be in-person accommodation for those that want it. And requires that there be remote opportunities for participation by a video conference, just like, like we're doing now, for those that want that. And that does not, and based, uh, based on a person's, uh, um, uh, comfort or lack of comfort. With regarding the status of the COVID nineteen pandemic, including, uh, being around people who may not be immunized. And so I drafted this along those lines, it says, sure. You, 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 Town Hall's got to have a spot for us, you want to go there, great. Uh, the public wants to go there, great. Uh, if people are uncomfortable because of pandemic. If people are uncomfortable because of pandemic concerns, they should, they should continue to have the ability to meet remotely via Zoom and have a hybrid going on here. I don't know if anybody's taken the chance to, 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 to read this.
I, I read it, Bill, and my only question is, will the state allow us to, to? I mean, the state sort of said, they said, in, in an emergency, you can do this, and you're sort of making it a little more lenient, and I don't disagree with you, but I'm just, I'm curious if.
I've had, I've had discussions with Jack Rikus, chairman of the council. We went back and forth on this. We look at the law, and the law says, you may do this, and you may do that. It doesn't say you shall do it.
Okay.
So other things are allowed. And what we came to is that if we adopt this, it would be with adopt, and if someone wants to take quibble with it legally, they can quibble with it legally. We'll deal with that when the time comes. At a, at a personal level, I would resign from the planning board if I had to go and, and be meet in person. I wouldn't go. So that's where I'm coming from. And I think other people should have the same. I, I, at a personal level, I choose, I'm enjoying being immunized. I spend time with immunized people, but I assure myself that everybody in the room has been immunized, and there's now no chance that I'm with people who are not been immunized. That's my personal feeling. And others are more liberal. That's fine. I don't, I, I, I'm fine with that. But I think people, we're not there yet. We got Delta parents coming in. We got grandchildren that we're protecting. We got other, other people at home that immune, in, immunocompromised things we're protecting. I don't, I don't think we can have a blanket statement that says, go anywhere and do anything. But that's my personal view. So.
Oh. Bill?
Yeah.
I'll just say that in, that I do agree with you, and I think that revisiting in person shouldn't happen until at least everybody has the opportunity to get the vaccine, until children are able to get the vaccine. My kids aren't vaccinated. They're gonna be going to school. That being said, I, I have three young kids at home, so being able to go into Town Hall would actually make it a little bit easier.
Yep.
Um, but I, I agree with you that until, at least until everyone of all ages has the opportunity to get a vaccine, I don't think it's.
Right. And I, at the end of this thing, I'm suggesting that the policy apply for ninety days. After ninety days, it'll be reviewed, maintained, or modified based on condition at that time.
It's my understanding from me that we we must provide the in-person ability. What this Zoom meeting is fine for the people that are good at Zooming, but we've cut a whole section of our community out by just doing Zoom. And I'd like to see.
Yeah. And, and what, what has to happen, Manley, is that.
Everyday person to be able to.
Yes. And they, they, the town needs to set up a video thing which has a screen in Town Hall. People can participate in Town Hall. People can participate in Zoom. Has to go, it's, it's a hybrid that we're talking, talking.
As I, for one, will be at the Town Hall meetings.
Yeah, and there'll be, and there'll be more, there'll be, there'll be more people there than before, and that's great. And that, then, then we have to have a hybrid, is what I'm saying.
I'm with you, Bill.
Now, under the.
Somehow, we need to to work towards what the legislature wants us to do, or have a have a target to try to make things.
Yeah.
We'll be in ninety days. In, according to this, this will be reviewing it in ninety days.
We're, this, this becomes a, a part of our bylaws. That's the other thing. This is how this gets enacted. We adopt this as a part of our bylaws, the planning board bylaws. And the way to do that is we have to have two readings of it. One is tonight, and if we agree with it, then the next meeting, we, we have a second reading of it, and then we vote on it, and it becomes part of our bylaws. That's how it works.
I, I, I don't want to disagree, but I, I like the legislature's wording. And I want to get back to business as usual.
I, I, and you can. But I thought the legislature frankly was very heavy, heavy, haven't, heavy-handed in dictating what personal choices need to be and still be serving on municipal boards.
And I think, so I'm not opposed to having some of the people want to meet at home, but I think we need to have a real good showing here at the, the Town Hall and getting business back as, as normal. I personally have been immunized.
Most people have.
I don't know about everybody else.
Right. Well, you can ask. So.
Bill?
Yeah.
Do we have to decide on whether or not this goes in the bylaws now, or can we sign it, do the ninety days, and then revisit as to if we'd want to put it in the bylaws?
I, my understanding is it doesn't bind us unless you put it in our bylaws. And then the legislature didn't deal with that. It didn't say, you know, how, 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 how a policy gets adopted is, 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 is subject to how the boards are set up to go. I mean, so I don't know if we can adopt the policy, but if it's not binding, it's not, it's not in our bylaws. I don't know that it's, that's binding. I, I, I don't care. My understanding is that it needs to be in our bylaws. But we can.
And if.
Okay.
I, I understand the fact that you're saying that someone has the ability to challenge it, but my, one of my concerns is if we don't try to stick close to what the state has mandated, all of our votes will be not legal.
Well, I say we adopt this, and if someone wants to challenge it, they can challenge it.
And I guess what I'm saying, it's not, not just the, we're not saying they challenge this thing. I'm saying if we approve a subdivision, if we approve whatever that particular vote, I think would be illegal if it's not done according to the state mandate.
If you read the law, it's, it has, it provides some latitude. It says, may this, may that. Here's some examples. If you read the, the, the sample policy that was put out by MMA, that's, that's, that's what it says. Well, we can do what we want to do, but I, I, I will not be going to Town Hall for meetings. I'll tell you that.
And I don't have a problem with that.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to leverage anything. I'm not trying to do anything, but you know, you can, that's, that's, that's just a fact.
So, Bill, hi.
Yeah.
So a couple, just a couple of quick, quick points here. The, the town council is also going through this, the same situation that we're going through, and they're going to be making some decision on what they're going to be doing. And in alignment with us, they're hoping the town council and the planning board stays together in their decision and what they're going to do. But I want to make clear that us, all of us here, we're working very hard to make sure that we can allow for board members and/or others to, to stay home and Zoom and still be a part of it.
Right.
So we're, we're not just gonna throw out and say we're a hybrid now and leave it at that. We, we are going to have a process. Jen has been in touch with the town council over and over again to get this owl thing that's gonna work to, you know, keep our town stream going. Mallory and Abby are on top of it as well. So it's, it's in the process. And just so that you, you know, you are on top of it, but you, you guys have to have a decision by the end of this month. If you don't, the state then can come in and tell us you have to be here in person.
Yeah, I think, I think we have a lot of it. I think we, we fully have a lot of it.
Yep.
So this is, we can vote on it next time, which we have one more meeting this month. It's, 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 it's seen on now. We can modify it or not modify it.
I just want to say, I don't, I don't see any drawback. It'd be, you have the option to come in if you want. You have the option to stay home. And I agree with Bill that I think no one should be forced to be in a position where they feel like their life is at risk because of COVID nineteen. So, you know, I think it gives us the ultimate flexibility. I don't know why.
What I'm saying is, and I guess what I'm saying is that with the state, they say, well, you have the ability to say that for whatever medical reason you choose, you won't be there, but you will be participating. And I, for one, don't intend to play doctor and say whether you should be here or shouldn't be here. If you say that I, I'm staying home or whatever medical reason that you choose who's, I don't know if anybody is qualified to start questioning every person about whether their medical needs are something that I approve of or not.
I, I, I disagree with the, with the character. It's not, it's not a medical need. I don't, I don't have a medical condition. I, I don't have to stay home because I have a gallbladder problem. You know, it's, that's not what I'm talking about. As Hershey says, it's a question of personal choice regarding exposure to.
Right. You don't want to be exposed to it. And what I'm saying is, I don't care what the reason is. If you say you're gonna be staying homeless, but you'll be participating for, through the Zoom, I don't think that anybody's gonna be questioning why you're staying home.
So I, I, I think everybody agrees. Is this correct? That we agree with this hybrid, remote, and in-person?
Absolutely.
I think this date calls for it.
I think, I think Bill did a great job editing and rewriting. I, I wholeheartedly agree with Bill with what you've said, and I, I'm, I'm all in on this. Just tell me when we're voting, and I'm voting yes.
Okay, thank you. And I think.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Bill's version.
We can't right now.
I'm sorry?
Can't right now.
Why can't we?
Also have two readings.
Yeah, yeah, we, we can, we, the sense, what, what, I, I'll take that as consensus that we're heading towards this, and we'll, we, we'll vote on it at the, at the next meeting.
Excellent.
Then we, then regardless of how it's interpreted regarding the, the bylaws there or not, we've done it that way. So, okay. It's a tough one. I, I was stunned when they got this last week. Because where the hell this come from? You know, and what, what, what the hell is the main legislation telling us how to take risks or not? So, anyway.
I think the question does need to be answered. If it's not within the state guidelines, are our votes going to be legal?
Well, if they're not legal, then let, let, let those chips fall, Manley.
And that's fine, but we ought to know upfront.
Well, well, that's, that's why when we adopted, the first thing the town council is gonna do is run it by Phil Sossier.
Okay, that, that, that was, that was my point.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think they may be running it by Phil Sossier anyway. So. Betsy.
Um, are, are we, are we done with that discussion?
I think we are.
Okay. I would like to propose that we ask town council for a moratorium on solar farms.
Yes, I agree.
Uh, we can't take that up in a vote. We, Amy put that on the agenda for next meeting, and we'll talk about it.
I believe we already did that.
We did.
Did we already do that? I think you didn't, maybe, maybe not, but.
I think I have.
But we did.
We ever took a vote on it. I think we ought to, we ought to.
Oh, you're right. You're right. Well, you, I'm sorry, Abby, Abby Kemble, one of the town councillors, she actually already requested that to happen. Um, not from us, but we, we can still put that on our.
Yeah, let, let's put that on the agenda for next time and.
Absolutely.
Take an advisory action on it.
Yep.
Yes.
I do have another thing. Sorry. Um, I would love for us to be able to have a conversation with the town attorney regarding language in the ordinance and comprehensive plan, and what is, what is binding and what is not, and what's open to interpretation in terms of land use in R five.
We can put that in as a request through, I think, through Joe.
Yeah, we could, we could probably set up a workshop.
Yes.
Do just the the attorney and the planning board to go over, you know, any of the questions that you want.
They, they would have to be independent of any particular case.
Correct.
No, we would, yeah, we would just say it would be like a, like a just a workshop of policy and procedures and the language and what they actually, the definitions would, would mean on his interpretation, instead of just all of your individual interpretations.
Very good. Yep. Okay. Great. Okay. Hershey, you have a hand up, or you're just waving?
No, I was waving to my partner because she's wondering when we're gonna finish, I think.
Finish very soon.
I'm tired.
Uh, uh, two things. I guess we talked about it before. The, the ZBA chose not to take jurisdiction on that appeal regarding the Benelot Road decision-making. That's over. The town council has acted on the sign ordinance in the I one zone, and they ignored our recommendation. And they're going with something which allows off-premises signs, large ones next to the road. It's going to a public hearing on the twenty eighth or thereabouts. I'm not gonna be here that week. And they've asked us to testify, so we talk about that on twenty first or whatever it is. I, I'm, I'm a little disappointed that we spent a lot of time on it and ignored, but that's, that's their prerogative. And the other thing I want to get out there is, I've been, this is a I, I've decided that I'm gonna serve as, on the planning board until the end of December. And then I'm going to get off. I've got some other priorities going, and I'd like to pursue the other priorities. I've done half of the term that I signed up for. So over the next six months, I'm, I'm here. I'm enthusiastic. I, I'm doing everything I can do. But there's a, if, if, if anyone knows anybody who's interested in being on the board, I give everybody six months' notice. So I just want to get that out there.
We're gonna need to groom a new chairman.
Groom somebody, and you need, I, I'll, I'll be talking to people I know that might be interested, and I'll try to recruit my replacement, but everybody be thinking about that. So I, I figure six, six months is a, a pretty, pretty, pretty good lead time. It goes by quick, but excuse me, I just wanted to get that out there because I made the decision last week. So.
My vote is for Betsy.
Well, you still need, you still, there's still only five of us. We ought to have seven. So you need, we need one or two more people anyway, whether I'm staying on or I don't stay on. So, but, so, okay. Okay.
I have a question. I have a question in regards to the passing on of the what basically directly related to what Greg Zinser had to say. Do we know? I don't remember who did first and second on that. Do we have that? I don't know if Amy's taking notes now or if they get recorded later.
First and second on which vote? For the two ordinances?
Yeah, on the, the.
Second ordinance.
The second one, the.
Let's see. Well, Manley, Manley made the first motion, and then looks like.
Guy seconded it.
Hershey seconded it, and then there was an amendment to it. And Manley made the amendment to the, to include the B one overlay maps that David made.
That's, that's, that, he's talking about the cultivation, not the, the.
Okay.
Or front, yeah.
Looks like Manley made the motion and Betsy seconded.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just didn't, I wasn't sure how it went through. Thank you.
Right. I think, I think, I think, I think Greg's distinction should be looked at. Make sure we got, we don't, we're not doing something we don't think we intend to do.
Right. That's what my concern is.
Yeah. I think we probably can't do it now because we're beyond it. We could, we could potentially modify that if we want to next time. And Robert's rules allows us to reconsider a motion if the mover or the seconder moves to do it. So let's, let's, let's think about that, and we can always change our recommendation on that one issue next week, if, next time, if we, if we choose to. We might not. So. Okay. Manley, I'm looking for my standing motion from you.
Make a motion adjourned.
Second, somebody.
Second.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Second. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
See you guys later. Thanks a lot.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.